Good evening, everybody. On City Council, Dave, 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 15, 20, 23, the time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's booth payment performance with the open plus meeting act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law.
Devin Porter.
President.
Pamela here. Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay. Sish. Six and a sentence.
And it's going to issue two approved, uh, previous.
Motion.
Second.
Uh.
Ready to share?
Uh.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
What I have tonight is, uh, there was a fire, uh, Forest Fire in April, and our fire department went to give mutual aid to it. And, uh, they were very, very grateful. And because it said that, uh, we don't recognize fire, not when we get the letters, we said that we should share them because it is very, you know, they deserve the recognition. So this is from the Lower Bank Fire, uh, Volunteer Fire Company. The Lower Bank and Green Bank Volunteer Fire Companies of Washington Township, Burlington County. Thank you for your response to, to the WUI assignment here in Lower Bank on eighteenth, twenty twenty three. With your help and the excellent work by the New Jersey Forest Fire Service, thirty-seven structures were protected and saved from a fast-moving wildfire fueled by high winds and dry conditions. Some of you traveled long distances and all of you sacrificed your time and equipment to help the small town in the pines. For that, we are truly grateful. We have always planned for this, and it finally happened. Because of this, planning the whole operation was a success. Our residents were ready to see a truck and ready crew in every driveway. We have heard of residents speeding through a view and sharing wifi passwords to connect to your families at self-serve, self-coverage here at Pleasantville. We are proud of our residents for showing their true colors during this tense moment. Once again, our whole town is grateful for your help and look forward to answering the call should you ever need our help. Most sincerely, Chief Michael Alexander, Lower Bank Fire Company. And there was another, uh, city. Dear Volunteer Fire, the mayor and committee of Washington Township, Burlington County, along with residents and their sincere gratitude for coming in to our aid. The Forest Fire on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three consumed two-hundred-and-fifty-seven acres along Route 542, Old Church Road and River Road in the Lower Bank section of the township. Because of your assistance, our residents experienced minimal damage to their properties. Please accept our sincere appreciation for your service. Very truly yours, the mayor, Daniel L. Jeans. And I remember hearing about this fire when it was on, I saw it on TV. And, uh, they were saying how when the, it was getting kind of low, they put a fire truck in every driveway. And I had never heard of anything like that, so I think that was, I'm glad that Pleasantville was a part of it. Chief, is there anything that you would like to add to that?
Um, it was a multi-jurisdiction under the, uh, National Framework for Emergency Management. Uh, the New Jersey State Police under the NIMS, they, we have strike teams that we help them, they help us. It's all part of the whole, uh, thing. We had a Landon County chief with Burlington County, and then we have Burlington County with Landon County. Um, and our main job, the WUI is a wildland urban interface, um, is to protect, um, the houses and structures. And it was very close to the backyard of these, um, you know, residents' houses. So I have a great crew, working with great people, met some new friends, um, and we all did a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good evening to everyone. If everyone from, um, the track team, the coaches, and, um, the fifth and sixth graders from the right center, you can stand, please. Here we have in front of us our champions. Let me begin by saying that it's a great honor to be here, to be speaking to all of you tonight. You all have worked so hard to become champions, and you deserve the best. To the dedicated and passionate coaches, pushing these young men and women to be the best is an accomplishment. Extraordinary things are happening in Pleasantville, and it all starts with the great effort of our youth. Be proud always to look back and say that you played the major part of putting our city on the map. I wish you the best of everything for your future, on and off the course and track. Remember, you are always a part of Pleasantville. You are a legacy. Congratulations to all of you. I have some certificates for you all, um, from myself and my colleagues up here. If any of my colleagues has anything to say, please. Don't get shy. You guys make us look good. Thank you for everything that you do. You put Pleasantville in a good light, and that's what we need, so thank you very much.
Yeah, but you fellas know how I feel. You see me all the time, so, you know, congratulations and good luck. Just gotta keep it going. All right, everyone. Good luck.
Congratulations, guys, and, uh, keep up the good work.
Congratulations and thank you for making us proud. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. Now, what did you want at the pen relays? I talked to coach for a second the other night at the, uh, red carpet, but I didn't.
Four by four hundred, you relayed.
Four by four hundred, one hundred. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you. I see you from this, when I go to the meets, I see you from this age on up. And I only hear the common people talk about their grandchildren and children, so.
Congratulations, uh, and keep up the hustle. I know I ran track. It, it's just like, you know, you train for just those few seconds, that minute or, or that, just to bring that time. So just keep up your hustle, keep up the grades. Congratulations again.
So I'm gonna just read, we wanna do the basketball team first, the fifth and sixth graders. It says certificate of achievement. Proudly presented to Naleo Clemmons. In recognition of the arm of the PRC acquiring the championship of the Landon Kate League March Madness Tournament. The city of Pleasantville acknowledges your contributions of a victorious achievement. Please come up with a certificate. Zachary Davenport. Congratulations. Seth Dozier. Willie Glass. Musier Moore. Mackay Morales. Samir Parks. Josiah Samuels. Congratulations. Sukun Toure. Ja, Jamaya Walker. Jamaya, I'm sorry. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Elijah Warner. Quasim Woodlock. Ma, Ma Se Williams. Any of the coaches here, you wanna take this?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, we have the, uh.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Job.
Now we have the pen relay, Yusef Golden. Congratulations. Isaiah Davenport. Jermaine Nelson. Xandier Ramos Bulgen. Congratulations. So this is the coaches for the pen relay. Mr. Allen Laws. Kevin A. Samir Jones. And Ernie Maravilla. Chief, you'll get a trust.
Yes. Will you have all the coaches come up? Line up across the back, three, exactly. Put your hands right in.
Basketball or?
You wanna take them separate? It doesn't matter to me.
It's for the newsletter, man. Can we, do, see how much you want. Okay.
Okay.
So let's do the basketball coaches first.
I was, I was gonna stay in the back, but that's fine. You gotta stay in the back right here.
Well, you can't roll it like that. Watch yourself. Watch yourself. You want, want kids, love, coaches right now?
Yes, yes.
Yes. You guys shift to the right a little bit so they kinda center them. Y'all gotta step still with those hoes. Ready? Got one? Got one? Everybody got it? All right? Everybody good? Thank you.
Where you been shopping? Wait, I didn't hear. The coaches and, uh. The track.
Oh, the track, yes. Hold on. I don't wanna get a towel next to it.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Shout out. When talking, why you ask U? Is it one, two, one, U, F?
Worked out, yeah, worked.
Oh, just one, uh, okay. You said Y, U, S, E, F. U, F, U, F.
Yes.
Take the U off. Did you have access to this? You did? Okay, tomorrow we can pick up the, uh, the mandate, I see. Yes. Okay. It's gonna be all, yes, yes. City first, so. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I said he's got my legs, Paul. He's gonna share.
Yeah. Ready?
First on the agenda is ordinance number six. This is the first reading of chapter one eighty-seven, article one, entitled Parks and Playgrounds of the City Code.
Any questions?
Resolution seventy-seven, awarding a contract for the Dowdy Road and Park Avenue improvements. Phase one, select some concrete, uh, uh, steel in the amount of one million, one hundred, two thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars before the sale.
Any questions?
Oh, yes, that project, this is paid, is that from Main Street, all the new roads, is it the whole?
It's broken into two phases. And this is phase one, from New Road to the bike path. And then from the bike path to, yeah, that's actually will be phase two. And just keep, be mindful that the first phase includes your sanitary improvements, uh, and then go back and do the road improvement. Chair, any questions?
Yes.
So, just for phase one, it's a million dollars more than include phase one entry. This is phase one. This is why we took so long to get to this project because the amount of conditions on the road and sanitary work as well, so, yeah, this is part of the project. Thank you. Your luck. Resolution seventy-eight, providing for the issuance and sale of the city notes do not exceed seventy-five thousand, two-hundred thirty-seven as stated principal amount of special emergency notes. Resolution seventy-nine, requesting. Resolutions coming on, requesting a six-month extension from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the fiscal two thousand twenty-one year Transit Village Grant Program for the Black Horse Pike Street Scheme improvements.
Any questions?
Resolution eighty, optimizing us a little of a grant application for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Neighborhood Preservation Program, ARP, grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs.
Any questions?
Mr. Connie, I'm at, uh, I think at the previous council meeting, council approved a vet, uh, resolution that was very simple to this. Uh, the grant target is the same, the project, uh, spoke of the project as change. Initially, uh, the city was discussing the potential, uh, potentially acquiring a piece of property down Main Street to begin cleaning up some of the light when, uh, the city and others went, uh, and spoke with the property owners. They're not in position to sell at this time. Uh, however, because this is grant money that is available to the city as an MPP, uh, program, uh, designated, uh, area, we wanna take advantage of this grant opportunity. So we identified another, uh, project within the area of the MPP, which is right at our bus terminal. Uh, as you all may know, there's existing, a pavilion there that used that gazebo. It's rusted. We looked at that when we did the, uh, the Christmas decorations and we went inside and realized the condition of that pavilion that was put up, probably about fifteen, eighteen, actually, we looked at the timeframe that it was put up about eighteen years ago. Uh, so this grant will be for a new pavilion, um, and other, um, enhancements along the bus station area. So we began to, you know, brighten up that area, beginning at the bus station coming down Main Street.
Are you, any questions here, but in, um, establish some, the old, the big, relocate some, no, some patients?
We haven't looked at it in detail like that. We're gonna take a look at that. Uh, but this cost is for us to actually, you know, tear this down. I don't know how, but, you know, staying, but, uh, install a new one and put up new benches and things that.
How old is it?
It's, it's close to twenty years old.
It's real?
Yeah, um, but we're looking at perhaps getting, uh, a structure that is more, um, where it endures.
Endures.
Uh, the lifespan is just a little bit, uh, better than what is up there now. And we're also looking at perhaps not making it so that there's gonna be ceiling so much in the inside. Uh, we wanna look at that more for, uh, an event space. Um, that's the type of pavilion that would be there. And then we're looking at outside space with a cover ring for our folks that are using the, um, the busts. We don't want it to become a.
Two more questions?
Resolution eighty-one, rejecting all bids for the Jukeville improvements.
Any questions?
I do have a question. I didn't, didn't hear about, we moved seventy-eight and if not, I didn't, uh.
Here, let's finish this one first.
All right, here.
Any more questions?
You have one to defend?
Okay. Brad, I have a question.
That's right, yeah. Seventy-eight, uh, Mr. Louis.
We, uh, that is for, uh, five or six years ago, we did revaluation, and we hit a bar of three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. And we paid over a five-year period. So we're now renewing for the fifth year, seventy-five thousand. Once we get the money, by this time next year, we'll finish off the, the bid, finish off the package.
Any more questions?
Chair, I want to go back to seventy-seven. I just wanna make sure both councilors, uh, clear understanding of what we're doing tonight. Um, especially those items that came before revenue finance and administration. It does not need your committee. Uh, so the six-month, uh, request for revenue, uh, the resolution seventy-seven, not seventy-seven, seventy, it's seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
It's seventy-nine, right? So that's a six-month extension for the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, for the builders grant. Uh, the award to the city under NJ DOT was two, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The cost of new construction for that area is four-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and so you see it's a twenty-twenty-one grant, so we're trying to leverage the funds so that the city does not have to take up the additional fifty. We've identified three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but we have to get approval from another grant so that we can merge those two grants to get this project done. So while we're working through that, we're asking the state for a six-month extension so we can get that done. Thank you, Chair.
Yes. Buildings?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Should all have a list in front of you, the bill that we have paid between last council meeting and new council meeting. Uh, most of them are small ones to get the very bottom wire transfers. Six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, that was the last payroll from the, the week of, uh, the fourth. Uh, five thousand dollars reserve money to transfer for postage. The very last one I paid for, million-dollar ninety-six, the second quarter taxes we paid to the county. And then the one on the top, page two, is interest from our bond that we, will be started in two thousand and fifteen. This is just interest for each other. In August, we will pay interest as well as principal. Um, the bills we're looking at to be paid coming forward, um, not a lot of big ones. Uh, most, most of them are minor. Uh, bottom of page one is ACOA trash collection for the, for, uh, for the month, one-twenty-eight. That's your trash and recycling. On top of page two is, uh, future systems. As you know, we have a, uh, program for, uh, abandoned property. Some other things we can work with the code is the two-month, uh, billing, forty-one hundred dollars. We go to page three. That way down, you'll see Flaxton Daniel's law office, so about eleven thousand. See very lot of money coming from escrows. As you see, for, most of it's from Savage Estro. And then there's the one, the last one, is when, uh, we had a lawsuit where they, they sued the flame board that they wouldn't let open, a store down on Cedar Avenue, Cedar, uh, on Cedar. Uh, we'll go to, we'll go to page four. Uh, it's Johnny Sanders, we're paying one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, we'll go to, look at page four, uh, it's Johnny Sanders, we got $150. That will be tied in with the one on page five. We go to line a third pro. Uh, apparently we had a window leaking in the finance office, and it created a mold situation. Uh, third pro remediated the mold. We had to rip out, uh, probably ten-foot wall, and the $1250 John Sanders replaced that and reset the window in, in my office. And other than that, it's, uh, normal operating bills that we, we pay on monthly basis. Any questions?
Thank you. Next, public portion, anyone from the Republican or Democratic Party, the items of the agenda is all ready. They are from the public. I think we're all, and it's a motion, both, both, second. What's your, what's your?
Compliment, that's nice, sir. Not very good, sir.
You know, I said, thank you.
Good evening, again, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council regular meeting. Day's date is, uh, the fifteenth, 2023, the time is seven oh one. To me, that's been duly advertised in the city's newspaper, the, uh, sunshine bar. Uh, students, please stand for dedication and, uh, thanks. Vol. Paul?
Davenport?
Present.
Fama Laro, here. Thomas, present. Camona?
Present.
Present. Barkley, Sisram. Sisram and attendants.
Let's say a motion of the specific degree of confidence. Who? Second. Aye.
I have nothing, thank you.
First meeting agenda is ordinance number six. This is the first reading. Amending chapter 187, article one, entitled Parks and Playgrounds of the City Council.
Motion.
Second.
Sorry.
Vol. Paul, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Amendment six, most of the second reading. Next is resolution seventy-seven, awarding a contract for the Doughty Road and Park Avenue improvements, phase one, Alexa Concrete LLC, in the amount of $1,102,154 before the sale.
One.
Second.
Vol. Paul, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Resolution seventy-eight, providing for the issuance and sale of the city's notes to not exceed $75,237 as the principal amount of special emergency notes.
Motion.
Second.
Vol. Paul, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Resolution... Resolution seventy-nine, requesting a six-month extension from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 2021 Transit Village Grant Program for the Black Horse Pike Streetscape Improvements.
Motion, second.
Vol. Paul, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
And Sisram. Resolution eighty, authorizing the submission of a grant application for the fiscal year 2023 Neighborhood Preservation Program, ARP, grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs.
Motion.
Second.
Vol. Paul, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-one, rejecting all bids for the Joker Field improvements.
Motion, second.
Vol. Paul, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
I need a motion for the Billiff?
Motion. Second.
Vol. Paul, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Laro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisram?
Yes.
Next is, uh, next is the public portion, remark from the Republican Party. Uh, any of you, Pleasantville City Council?
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to ask, uh, I've gotten a few phone calls from frustrated business owners from Main Street and close to the Cater Avenue. Um, I believe the road was closed for some time. But I just wanted to know, was there a warning given, given to business owners before those streets were, were worked on last week?
Hey, it's the protocol. Uh, we can check into it, um, but that's part of the protocol that everyone's notified is being impacted by the...
And they were notified, um...
I have to say that they were. I said that is the protocol, but I can check to make sure that they were.
But you don't know if they were.
That is the protocol, and I will check to see if they were or were not, but that is the protocol.
Okay. Because I'm just speaking to some of the council representatives, and they were pretty upset. Um, I just happened to be at the wrong place at, at the right time. It was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I had to pick up an order of food for teachers that morning. And I had to park my Dungen and carry over trays of food to my car that morning where they were closed. And the servers were literally in tears because the streets were closed. It was costing the business. And I don't know what's really funny about it, but they were really, it really hurt and upset. You know, we're really impacting the lives of people working in these stores. So that's all I want to know. If they were warned, and if they were warned, I'll, I'll let them know how they were warned, and I will report back.
Certain change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion closed, public portion. Motion. Second. A favor? Aye.
No, I just, uh, well, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight and congratulate again the track and basketball team on their, um, success in, uh, in sports. And also to, uh, the fire department, because we never know when we're going to be in that situation where we need the aid, we've been there before, so we know how, really know how it is. And, uh, that's really about it. Um, it's, oh, Doughty Road, don't live there, but I'll be glad when it's done too, for the residents better. You know, consequently saying something, Doughty and Park, something, but, you know, I'm glad this, this is nice, and that's it. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you for coming out.
Justice Ruth. Thank you all for coming out.
Justice. I'm going to leave the story behind. And please remember, uh, some time and, uh, use the speed limits, uh, city limits, please. Thank you, have a good night.
Justice Doughty. Uh, no, no.
Sometimes you gotta take a step back to go two steps forward in the city.
Justice Thomas.
Um, I want to say that, um, Councilwoman, um, Fama Laro and myself, we went to the senior building at St. Peter's. Uh, we also had the Love Bug, um, costume, which was a, a big part, and we also gave them some treats. Um, they were very delighted that, you know, we came past to pay them a visit. They were able to take pictures and they were able to get hugs from the Love Bug brand. So I'm going to say thank you all, yes, for Mother's Day, so we didn't get a chance to have each Mother's Day to all the women that are here.
That's right.
Um, grab one, and, um, see you next couple of weeks at the next meeting.
Thank you for ladies, Mother's Day, uh, our City of Pleasantville, thank you for your comments and taking a motion to, uh, Jerry Bush. Second. A favor? Aye.